Outreach and plans for more housing. Local leaders hope to place 500 people from Skid Row in permanent supportive housing within a year. While tech jobs are a huge growing sector in the market, yet there is still a discrepancy between the number of men and women who are pursuing this field. Rasha Goel has more on how it might be changing in the future. Rasha?
Yana, I'm at the Getty House, the mayor's residence, where Mayor Eric Garcetti recognized Women's Equality Day. Thirteen-year-old Kayla Banks has already made a name for herself in the tech world. A girl who learned a code at the age of nine, she recently got onstage at the OSCON Developers' Conference and impressed the audience with her speech "Undefinable Me."
We're all put into a skin that we have no control on, the control of. So really, your job and your mission is to show everybody what's inside of you.
She inspired the 4,000-person crowd by telling them she wasn't going to be limited by how people label her.
I just talked to them about myself, my future. And I got, like, after I did my speech, I was reading all the tweets and it just, how many people were so inspired. Even people were saying that they cried. It just, it just makes me really think that there was a purpose to give me a talk.
She is among the few who have chosen to pursue a career in the tech field, where officials say men outnumber women four to one in jobs. And her advice?
Don't worry about the barriers and gender roles. I mean, like myself, everybody just welcome me in. Yeah, they might look at me a little weird at conventions, but yeah, if you want to do it, then you can do it.
Luz Rivas, an MIT graduate, also attended the mayor's Women's Equality Day celebration and talked to us about her experiences of working in the field.
It's challenging when you're one of the only women in a big classroom or at work. You know, when I first started as an engineer, I was the only woman in my, on my team. You know, being the only woman, sometimes, um, you know, there's more scrutiny in your work, um, they doubt you, um, you know, you have to prove yourself more, I think, than if you were a man.
And now, she's created a platform with DIY Girls, Do-It-Yourself Girls, whose mission is to increase girls' interest and success in technical careers. Even the city of L.A. is encouraging more women to apply in the field of technology.
We know that we can't guarantee the outcomes, but we can sure work hard towards them. And if we do our work hard enough, we can be pretty much rest assured that eventually the outcomes will follow.
With the resources and support in place, pursuing a career in the field of technology is an opportunity that could be as easy as a push of a button. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Women's Equality Day at the mayor's home celebrated women from all different city departments. While LAPD officers in parts of downtown and the San Fernando Valley will soon be equipped with new on-body cameras to help in their investigations. As Gil Reyes reports, the public will also have virtually no access to the footage.
You may notice more officers wearing them. Hundreds of on-body cameras will be given to officers in Mission, Newton, and Central Divisions in the coming weeks, a way to improve police transparency. But the public has its doubts.
If these videos will not be shown to the public, how do we know what really happened, what happened, who, who did what?
At a recent Police Commission meeting, speakers and Commissioner Robert Saltzman raised concerns over video access. The rules are body cam footage generally won't be released to the public. Also, officers can review footage of police shootings and other use-of-force incidents before they file their reports. Critics say this might give cops a chance to alter their stories and justify use of force based on what's captured.
For me, that undermines the, the significant effort going on here, which is to increase transparency and increase trust.
Over the next six months, the LAPD will be reviewing the use and deployment of its on-body cameras, recommending minor tweaks here and there when warranted, after speaking with officers and the public. One thing that won't be changing, however, is the practice of allowing officers to look at the footage before filing their reports. That practice will remain unless the Police Commission changes the rules. Police also won't be sharing footage with the public unless the chief of police gives the okay.
That's just not a video. It could be an interview of you, um, as the victim of a crime and/or somebody who witnessed what happened. Uh, we don't disclose that for a number of reasons, including protecting your privacy.
And the possibility of jeopardizing investigations. Eight hundred and sixty on-body cameras will be handed out to officers by October. In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Earlier this year, the city council approved a budget that sets aside half the funding needed to capture 7,000 more cameras. Well, it's a program that gives the most at-risk inner-city kids a chance to dream big and go to college. The I Have a Dream Foundation is now making dreams happen at an elementary school in Boyle Heights. Anna Marcos has more.
We are the dreamers.
The mighty, mighty dreamers.
The mighty, mighty dreamers.
The future just got brighter for 65 third graders at the Boyle Heights Sunrise Elementary School. The I Have a Dream Foundation has adopted them, and for the next 10 years, it will mentor them and give them the academic help they need to succeed.
I think they're gonna help us with, um, our math, reading, and writing.
What do you need help with exactly?
Uh, math.
You have trouble adding or subtracting?
I have trouble doing, like, multiplication.
I don't have that much trouble.
Are you a straight-up student?
Yes.
So you don't need help?
No.
This becomes the 19th class adopted by the foundation, which picks schools in places like Watts, Inglewood, and Boyle Heights, places where the kids often don't have the same opportunities as others.
We don't cherry pick the students at all, so we take every single one of them. We have, um, seven special needs children in this class. One of them is even nonverbal, but we don't leave anybody out.
The kids get help graduating high school in a city where less than half of inner-city kids ever graduate. They also get help getting into college with an $8,000 scholarship.
And that's what we want to see at our schools, the whole community coming together in support of our children who deserve the very best.
Education is so important to increase your opportunities and, uh, the possibilities for your future.
These kids are dreaming big already.
Tell me what you want to do in college, what do you want to study?
I want to study how to be FBI agent.
Go, 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 G.T., go!
The total cost of making sure these students succeed, about $25,000 per student over the next 10 years. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The I Have a Dream program is funded by private donors and foundation grants. While city leaders go for Olympic gold, a reward is being offered in the shooting death of a man in South L.A. And some orangutans at the L.A. Zoo are flying high. All these stories in City Beat. A $50,000 reward is being offered for information in the shooting death of 21-year-old Almícar Ponce, who was killed in June while standing with a friend on the sidewalk in South L.A. The gunshots came from two cars heading northbound on Wall Street from 43rd Street. Ponce's sister said he was kind and generous.
He was always very caring and looking out for others, and not only for us as a family, but as a community. Everybody in their neighborhood knew him.
We know that the family needs closure, the community needs closure. Uh, and we ask for your help in providing information that will lead to the resolution of this case.
Anyone with information is urged to call the Newton Division at 323-846-6556. Well, it's been more than three decades since athletes from around the world descended upon the L.A. Coliseum during the 1984 Olympic Games. And now, city council members voted unanimously to put L.A. on the global stage again by moving forward with a bid to host the 2024 Olympic Games. Council members agreed to back the bid after city attorneys assured them the city will not be making any immediate financial commitments. Following the vote, the U.S. Olympic Committee selected Los Angeles as the nation's candidate to bid for the 2024 Summer Games. The U.S. O.C. Board of Directors joined Council President Herb Wetson and L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti in Santa Monica to make it official.
Los Angeles is Olympics-ready. The Olympics is in our DNA. Olympics love L.A., and L.A. loves the Olympics. We hope to return those games back home.
The Los Angeles Zoo has debuted a newly renovated Red Ape Rainforest, the first major improvements to be made since the exhibit opened in July of 2000. The goal of the eight-month project was to take the six orangutans, who called the habitat home, off the ground and give them more climbing options. The makeover included a thicker, stronger stainless steel-woven mesh, several two- and three-tiered wooden climbing structures, 10 bridges on land and suspended in the air, two swings used for foraging and play, and several hammocks. Well, it's back to school, and that means back to basics when it comes to pedestrian and cycling safety around campus. Gil Reyes reports from South L.A.
Students from South L.A.'s 99th Street School receive advice that could save their lives during the morning walk to campus. The first tip is to always stop, look, and listen before crossing the street.
Slowing down and not being in a rush, because when we're late or we're in a rush or we're trying to make it to class on time, we're often running and we forget that there's other folks on the road.
Lessons to start the school year right from the nonprofit group Safe Moves. They've teamed with the LAPD Southeast Division and L.A. School Police for a morning of safety reminders. Tips like using crosswalks when crossing the street and wearing bicycle helmets always when cycling. These life-saving tips also apply to the children's parents, who, by a show of hands, are far too often texting and driving while children are in the car. Many of these students admit seeing their parents texting and driving during the commute to school. Not only is safety compromised, but drivers could be fined $160 for the first offense, $280 or more for subsequent violations. Children are also reminded that accidents can happen while texting and walking.
If you go to any middle school or even an elementary school, you'll see kids with cell phones, walking mindlessly across the street, walking on the sidewalk with their cell phones, their heads are down. So we're teaching kids, the phone goes in the backpack and the head stays up.
Giving kids a leg up on safety. In South L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Police are also urging students to walk and bike in groups. Well, Southern California has made it on the map for having the second-worst streets in the country, and cities like L.A. are helping to pick up the slack. Mayor Eric Garcetti has helped outline a new plan called Fix Our Roads to help fill those pesky potholes. Anna Marcos has the story.
We've all felt them, driven through them, complained about them. The pothole problem makes one big dent in California's streets and its economy. Now, city leaders have teamed up with county and state leaders to clean up California's streets and highways with a Fix Our Roads campaign.
We need $78 billion of repairs for our roads, and if we don't get ahead of this game, we're gonna fall behind.
The city of L.A. paved 2,400 miles of roads last year, enough to build one long road from here to Washington, D.C. But it's still not enough, because our roads, like those throughout the state, are decades behind when it comes to improvements.
Both the Port of Long Beach and the ports of Los Angeles move 40% of America's cargo up across the state. Our roads leading in and out of our ports, our bridges, the infrastructure, need support, and they need investment to continue moving America's cargo.
State and local leaders are putting together a package to provide long-term, consistent funding for fixing our roads, including investing a part of the gas tax for transportation projects.
California cannot have a strong middle class or a thriving economy if our roads are congested and people and goods aren't moving efficiently.
Every year, we delay in improving our road infrastructure, the price tag goes up.
On the home front, Councilmember Joe Buscagino introduced a motion to require private parking garages to accept credit cards, so the city can rely on a paper trail to claim its 10% cut. The city will also improve its formula for charging companies that rip up the street, such as cable and telephone operators. All told, that's millions more that could go into providing a smoother ride for all of us. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Studies show Angeleno drivers spend more than $1,000 a year in added car maintenance costs due to potholes and bad roads. While MacArthur Park Lake becomes home to an exhibition of floating artwork, Rasha Goel has more on the creative spheres that are bringing color to the park.
It's not every day we see the mayor of Los Angeles kayaking at MacArthur Park Lake, but how could you not with hand-painted floating inflatable spheres? It's all part of the Portrait of Hope's project, featuring 3,000 spheres.
This is gonna be the largest public art project in the United States and also the largest civic project in the United States.
The project is conceived by the nonprofit organization Portraits of Hope. Each orb is four to six feet in diameter and covered in bright floral and fish patterns.
Altogether, we've had almost 10,000 people in, throughout Los Angeles, work on this project. Now, many of them are school kids who, before they even had a chance to put a paintbrush on these spheres, had to go through a course in public policy.
Nine-year-old Ocalani Santiago helped paint one of the spheres, but today was even more special for her.
I think it was kinda cool, 'cause I never met the mayor before and I got to do it with the mayor.
The spheres will be in water for a month and then will be donated to social services institutions across the country.
Creativity isn't just something that we apply to solve problems. Creativity is about inspiring our souls. It's about igniting our community. It's about reinvigorating our entire city.
And this is one creative project that will keep the ball rolling. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Officials hope this will be a stepping stone in revitalizing what's been considered an iconic and historic park in Los Angeles. While following the announcement that L.A. is in the running to host the 2024 Olympic Games, Angelenos were quick to post their excitement on social media. That's the focus of this week in tweets. The L.A. mayor's office tweeted a pic of the L.A. Coliseum all lit up, posting, "The Olympic flame is burning bright in L.A. tonight." Alex Morgan posted, "Looking forward to bringing the Olympics back to my hometown. #LA2024." The L.A. Public Library favored a tweet from Mashable, which posted a pic of the mayor in a victory pose with council members Mark Whis, Harris Dawson, and Joe Buscagino. They tweeted, "L.A. is the U.S. candidate for the 2024 Olympics. The mayor is ecstatic." Jacob Soboroff tweeted a pic of a guy doing a flyby in a jet pack at the L.A. Coliseum. He wrote, "L.A. made a dude fly for '84 Olympics. Imagine the crazy-ish in 2024. So stoked we're official USA bid city." And that's a look at this week in tweets. Well, some folks got a chance recently to see the L.A. waterfront like they've never had before, as the Port of L.A. showcased all that it has to offer. There is nothing like taking a ride on the open sea and enjoying the sights of the L.A. waterfront, from sea lions taking a leisurely swim to catching a glimpse of Battleship Iowa.
Oh, I love it. You know, I went to the, uh, captain, uh, captain bed and I took pictures and all these things. It's very exciting.
In an effort to connect folks with L.A.'s waterfront, officials hosted the first-ever Waves and Wheels event, offering free boat tours in celebration of World Trade Week, which promotes international commerce by educating folks on the major role the L.A. port plays in trade relations.
It's important that people are able to come down here and see what we do and how this affects international trade.
Riders also got to see various attractions from different perspectives, such as massive cargo containers, vessels, the Maritime Museum, and Ports of Call Village, a memorable experience for one visitor.
I miss the sea. I was a ex-sailor, a retired sailor.
Officials say the boat tours are just one of many events that help bridge the gap between the port and the public.
The port, this is a working, vibrant port, and it's important that we share that with the community.
A vibrant port that offers something for everyone, including these incredible views. And in addition to those stunning vistas, San Pedro also offers some delicious culinary delights. More than 20 of the area's finest restaurants recently headed outdoors to share their tasty dishes on the L.A. waterfront. As Gil Reyes reports, community is on the menu at the new Taste of San Pedro event.
Welcome along to the Taste of San Pedro. Ah, it's a fine day for it as well.
No tall tales from this tall pirate. It's a glorious afternoon with a lot on your plate to enjoy.
What's your favorite, uh, favorite part of this event?
The food.
The wine.
I think the music.
Oh, we saw Irish dancers. That was awesome.
We're at the Port of L.A.'s new Taste of San Pedro event, back after a three-year absence. Smaller but more upscale, this tent-to-tent community food fest takes place at the port's Crafted Marketplace.
We did it in more of a festival setting before, but this is an event designed to feature more really of food and beverage that we have to offer and talent, rather than a carnival. A lot of people don't know about what San Pedro has to offer, so this is an opportunity for people to come out and experience our rest, our fabulous restaurants and our beverages.
You want one, two?
More than 20 area restaurants represented. J. Tranny's, which celebrates 90 years in the neighborhood, serves up Japanese hamachi tartar and chicken sausage. Owner and fourth-generation San Pedro resident Dustin Tranny is rediscovering his community by stepping outside the kitchen.
You have so many different restaurants, so many different people. People that I see come at the restaurant, but don't really get the time to interact with them on a social level. So here, it's just fun, relaxed. You got live music, great food, awesome people, and it's a, you couldn't beat the day. It's beautiful out.
See what else is cooking at the waterfront by visiting sanpedrochamber.com. In San Pedro, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Other favorite restaurants on the bill included The Whale and Ale, 22nd Street Landing, and San Pedro Brewing Company. While enjoying Italian opera under the night sky, getting inspired by modern architecture, and a race that'll get your heart pumping, all this and this week's things to do. On September 12th and 13th, Pacific Opera Project continues its successful run of presenting engaging productions in unique venues across Los Angeles with an outdoor production of Giuseppe Verdi's Fall Staff. Enjoy table seating with food and wine, a top-notch cast and orchestra all under a starry sky, as pop presents this thoroughly good-natured masterpiece in a celebratory atmosphere, proving once again that opera is an art for the masses. The performance takes place at the Museum Plaza at Forest Lawn Glendale, located at 1712 South Glendale Avenue in Glendale. For more, visit pacificoperaproject.com. Are you a fan of modern mid-century architecture? Well, here's your chance to spend Saturday, September 12th, touring some of the finest examples of modern design in Venice, Santa Monica, Hermosa Beach, and more. The L.A. Beach City's Modern Home Tours are dedicated to finding the best modern residential architecture in the U.S. and beyond. Explore new products, architecture, and design, and examine the people, places, and things that define modern. With carefully selected architects, neighborhoods, and architecture, you'll not only learn about the cutting edge of home design, but you might even get an idea or two for your next home project. For more info and tickets, visit modernhometours.com. For some heart-pumping racing action, head out to the Red Bull Global Rallycross at the Port of L.A. on September 12th and 13th. Join other racing fans for all-day racing action, exhibitor booths, awesome giveaways, and more. Every ticket is a pit pass, so the entire family can visit the paddock to see the stars and cars of Red Bull Global Rallycross. Ken Block leads the championship, but anything could happen on this doubleheader weekend. The event takes place at Port of Los Angeles Birth 46. That's at 3011 Minor Street. Gates open at 10:00 a.m. For tickets, visit tixr.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana K., and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
If you're in an accident, just stay. Call 911. Help if you can. You might save someone's life. Obey the rules of the law.
During California's next major earthquake, an epic battle will take place. Don't fight a brick. The brick will win. DareToPrepare.org.
Hola, soy Marisol desde Canoga Park, la ciudad toda americana. Estás viendo LA City View, canal 35. Nuestra ciudad, nuestro canal. Nuestra ciudad, nuestro canal.
Sergeants call the members, have them report to the council chambers. I do want to thank Mr. Bonin, Buscaino, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Corretz, Ofero, and Root for being a part of today's on-time caucus. Sergeants, I need one more member. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, September 8th. I want to welcome everyone to your Los Angeles City Council member, I mean, meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Please call and roll.
Bloomingfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sidio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Wezar, Corretz, Ricorio, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Root, Wesson, Timmer is present in our quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Buscaino moves. Bonin, seconds, next.
Commended resolutions for approval.
Corretz moves. Ofero, seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday. Now, by the time of the flag salute.
Okay, Mr. Corretz, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Please put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's run through the agenda.
Before we begin, Mr. President, there's a request to continue items 1A, G, and M to September 22nd, item 1N to October 9th, item 5 to September 16th, and item 20 to tomorrow, September 9th.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order? Continue.
Item 1 is an item known for public hearing, and there are cards on that item.
Okay. Let's continue.
Items 2 through 16 are items which public hearings have been held.
Specials, members. Mr. Ofero.
Present item 13 special, please.
13 special for Mr. Ofero. Mr. Root. 16 for Mr. Root. I don't see any more specials. Madam Clerk, why don't we open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Let's move on to the next section.
And for item number 3, the ordinance will be held over for one week if not till, I'm sorry, held over to September 16th. If not reconsidered with 12 members.
Okay, fine. Next section?
Item 17 through 27 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body? Cards?
Cards on items 17, 18, 19, 21, 22, 24, 25, and 26.
Okay, let's hold those.
And 27.
Hold those items and vote on whatever's left.
That's item 23.
Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you.
On the continuation agenda, item 28 is an item which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, I'm told to, we're gonna amend that, so why don't we hold that? That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Okay, we do have one presentation. We'll wait a moment on that. We'll start dealing with some of the items. We'll deal with Mr. Walsh on item 17. John Walsh on item 17. John Walsh on item 17. Okay, on that item, let's prepare to... Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, strongly support Mayor Garcetti's recommendation to appoint Mr. Josh LaFarga, Wilmington resident, to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. I've seen firsthand, in the course of the last three years, Mr. LaFarga's passion to serve his community. He is raising his son in the city of Los Angeles and has been an advocate for a number of key initiatives in the city of Los Angeles, specifically in Wilmington, as it relates to waterfront development, community engagement, even more so helping with the I Heart Wilmington Find a Home, where this I Heart Wilmington is a new generation of leaders emerging in Wilmington that are advocating for social justice, advocating for community engagement, voter turnout. And I want to thank Mr. LaFarga for taking on this role and this commitment to continue to serve his city. We're proud of this appointment. And I just had an opportunity to speak with Mr. LaFarga, and he is committed to going to a number of neighborhood councils across the city, introducing himself, and really proud of this appointment. So I ask for an aye vote as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Let us open the roll. Mr. Sacks, I got your card after we began conversation on the subject. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
If you want to speak, please get your cards in now. Next item is item 19. Ms. Pearlman? You're disrupting the meeting. Please stop that. Ms. Pierman? 19, Donna? I believe she passed. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Donna, we're gonna go to 21. Ms. Pierman, item 21. Come on now. I gotta start the clock. Come on. Don't start it yet. Item 21.
This shows another way where you're overspending the money over here. Development of a new public green space, Corindo Park. I don't see why we couldn't, I'm hoping this is paid for by public, I mean, private money, because I don't see that we need to be spending $600,000 in community development, city grants. And I'm gonna make sure I don't speak over a minute because I don't think it's fair that we've been cut down on minutes where we've been talking. Anyway, I'll just say real fast, you could have spent that money on bringing down video conferencing. Bring back video conferencing. Thank you.
You're off the subject. Thank you. That's a warning, Donna. Please don't do that again. Let's, on this item, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, item 22. I do not see Mr. Walsh. Let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, let's go to our next item. Item number 1 is Mr. Previn. Mr. Walsh and Mr. Previn. Eric Previn, please come forward. Mr. Previn?
Yes, it is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And this item pertains to our district. It's 112, sorry, 11232 West Van Owen Street. And as I looked at this one, this is a lien, sir. It is a lien, sir, for $22,000 plus. Now, it was $29,000. When I looked into what's going on there, it's perplexing. Now, what you have is you have a number of departments building inspection. This one, I believe, is for an automotive facility who are coming out doing inspections and then disappearing. They send things in the mail to people who do not receive them, as you know. And then when I bring one up, a nice one, like, say, the CVS group in my neighborhood, where are multiple CVSs on my street, Ventura Boulevard, right in Studio City, they have a lien, and then that one vanishes from the agenda. It's continued and then never returned. So it is worrisome, sir. And I must tell you, if you could instruct your team to put items on the agenda, like item 12, where we deal with mental health and LAPD.
Stay on this one.
Then people could come down and speak on issues that are a vital concern to their community, not just liens and pernicious fines and penalties that seem to float the boat down here for the historic waiver of the new labor deal you made and all that sort of stuff.
Okay, you're off the subject.
Well, sir, it's tough.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, Mr. Walsh?
And while he's coming, Mr. President, there's a request to continue item 1Q to September 22nd.
Okay. This is on item 1, Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or at JWalshConfidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Okay? Now, item 1 is protest, noncompliance, or code violations. You've been doing a fairly good job on code violations. We would like to, $667, West Kingsbury Street, $4,000, West Oral. These are landlord violations. We'd like to point out anybody here who has a landlord. If there's any code violations, report them. And if the landlord does not bring your apartment up to code, the landlord will no longer, the landlord will be fined. It will be a lien. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Go to Mr. Ofero. You wanted item 13, was it?
Yes, item 13, Mr. President. Thank you. I just want to stand today and recognize the extraordinary work of the City of Los Angeles Human Relations Commission. And I want to thank you, Council President Wesson, for your leadership on making this a priority for the city in terms of the work they do at this particular time that is, they are feeling such a deep need. I also want to recognize the Executive Director, Patricia Villasenor. Please, please rise, Patricia. You deserve a big round of applause. And I've had the great pleasure of working with Patricia for 13 years, even longer, probably. And just to know that she heads a commission that does such incredible work. We've partnered with the HRC on numerous issues, including countering violent extremism, which we'll be reporting on a regular basis to my committee, Arts Parks, bullying, religious diversity. This year, one of the highlights was the April 21st Day of Celebration of Religious Pluralism in the city of Los Angeles. And we had faith leaders from across the city. That is just one element of the important work that they do, despite their small staff and limited resources. A city of 4 million residents, Los Angeles. It's important to note a few statistics. 49% of our residents are foreign-born. And that doesn't even reflect the number of residents that come from other states. 224 languages with affiliates of 600 religious sects, are practiced in the city of Los Angeles, which really underscores the critical importance of HRC. We are the most multicultural city in the United States, if not the entire world. So this item really, I think, just underscores the importance of the work this committee does and the fact that you'll be reporting on a regular basis. And my office will be working very closely with you on initiatives that will bring a greater sense of peace and calm in this city, which is so sorely needed at this time. So Patricia and your whole team, thank you so much for the work you do. And I look forward to approving this item. And we're gonna be hearing a lot more from the HRC in the coming weeks and months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ofero. And Patricia, thank you as well. We do anticipate, even though you're a smaller group, it's a mighty group, and there's a very important role for you to play. Mr. Ofero, I can't say enough about you working with them to tackle a conversation that deals with tolerance and race and all of the issues we have today. So with that said, let us open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, you said that we can vote to reconsider. Which item was that?
Item 3, the ordinance.
Okay, so members, we're gonna vote on reconsideration, and then we will actually vote on the item on 3. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now, we will actually vote on the issue. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes. Thirty-nine.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to defer to Mr. Sadio for presentation. Don't be shy.
Mr. O'Farrell, thank you for setting up the cue for this. You cannot talk about multiculturalism in the city without talking about the tremendous impact that the ethnic media has on the city. In fact, ethnic media is the media of this city because it actually has the largest stations. And we'll also see the most celebrated stations. Telemundo, who is with us this morning, 52 and a partner, NBC, Telemundo 52 Los Angeles, KVEA, their West Coast flagship station, received top honors recently. I, as you know, have worked for years on the driver's license, and they covered the story. And as a result of their coverage of that story, they received seven Emmy Awards at the 67th Emmy Awards held on Saturday, July 25th. Seven Emmy Awards, not for Spanish-speaking stations, seven Emmy Awards for the entire media.
That deserves a round of applause.
That deserves a round of applause, somebody. Somebody say amen. So, and their program, Not Settles 52, their 11:00 PM was recognized with the top award of regularly scheduled daily evening news newscast. Their show at 5:30 was tied at the number-one spot. And their newscast continues to feature relevant information, like the driver's license or the Dream Act or immigration reform, all these matters that are relevant to millions of Angelenos. And yet, you would think they weren't an issue at all if you listened to the English-language stations. But they are the top issues of this community and of the immigrant community. They were amongst the top Spanish-language broadcasters, and they led the pack with 18 nominations this year in the areas of information, public affairs, sports series, medical news stories, outstanding editor, and outstanding videography. And at the end of the day, they won an Emmy Award for their special collaboration, AB-60 Driver's License for All Phone Bank. It is with great honor and great privilege, let me introduce the President and General Manager of Telemundo 52, Cecilia Chavez, here to the City Council.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for this recognition. And it's through great partnerships, like the one we have with Councilman Sadio, who's made himself available to come to numerous interviews and really tackle the issues that are important to the community. You know, we pride ourselves in being first-in-class newscasts regardless of language. We are mainstream, whether some like it or not. The reality is that we produce newscasts that impacts the entire community, Hispanic community. We have many issues that need deeper focus, and of course, we are there to provide the relevant information. Our obligation is to provide information that is available to our community so that they can empower themselves, that they make the decisions that they need in their lives to improve their lives throughout the, throughout the many issues that they live. So I, this is my management team, and I'm very proud to be here with them today and share this recognition with everybody. So thank you very much. We are definitely humbled and honored to be here with you today. Thank you.
Now, thank you. Thank you very much.
Now, Mr. President, you know, this is a live production, and so like all live productions, we have a technical glitch over to my side. Live on air, but here it comes. It looks like we've worked it out.
I thought you were talking about Mr. Harris Dawson.
We can't improve on perfection, right, Mr. Dawson? Anyway, what a great honor. Que gran honor, un placer para mí, para todos que están aquí, para presentar este premio a ustedes. Felicidades. Thank you, what a great honor and privilege it is for me to give you this as an acknowledgement for the incredible work that you did, for all the Emmys that you won, but most importantly, for your attitude of service and that you use the media as a tool of service for the community so that they are empowered, so that they can have a better life here in our great city. So thank you so much for all that you do for the City of Los Angeles, for the state and the nation.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Sadio?
Yes.
I want to recognize Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just briefly wanted to thank Councilmember Sadio for a wonderful presentation and to thank Telemundo for the work you do because Spanish speakers get a majority of their information through visual, visually, through the media and other things. They look at the programming, their news, and so they get informed that way. But you are not only doing a service for the Spanish speaker, but for all of us because we involve more of our population, the civic life of Los Angeles, through your programming and your news. So your work here, the service you provide should not be underestimated in terms of the great involvement you're providing for people of all backgrounds in the City of Los Angeles. Councilmember O'Farrell just mentioned that we are one of the most diverse cities in the world right now, and it will only continue to function when people feel part of it and they get themselves involved civically, and you're doing a great job of that. Thank you so much, Telemundo.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Thank you.
And again, congratulations, Telemundo. Mr. Weezer, you want to take, is it 16, item 16? So Madam Clerk, why don't we move to item? I'll wait for the crew to leave.
Felicidades. Felicidades. Good to see you. Hi. Good to see you, your team.
But you know, before I call on Mr. Weezer, I should go immediately to the chair, even though I do see him now. Mr. Root?
I mean, I'd like to see my time to Councilmember Weezer for the presentation, I mean, for the item.
Thank you, Chairman Root. And I think we have a video that we wanted to start off this presentation if possible. If we could queue that up, please.
For too long, we have witnessed the impact on our nation's youth from the use of smokeless tobacco by Major League Baseball players. This Knock Tobacco Out of the Park campaign is gaining momentum from coast to coast.
Unfortunately, I know that a lot of kids also like to imitate their favorite players by chewing tobacco. If the pros are doing it, it must be okay, right? The thing is, it's not okay. It's just not.
If I had not seen baseball players chewing before I tried it, I never would have tried it. I never would have even thought about it. It doesn't belong here at Little League fields. It doesn't belong in big-league parks.
I am joined by national, state, and local leaders, public health and youth advocates, to announce that we will be introducing legislation at the Board of Supervisors to make San Francisco the first city in the United States to ban all smokeless tobacco products on our athletic
Boston loves baseball, and ballplayers are our kids' heroes. I want to thank the Boston Red Sox for their cooperation. Together, we are looking out for healthy, the health of our young people.
We want to make sure that today's players, young people, don't emulate the use of chewing tobacco into their lives.
Right now, 15% of high school boys use chewing tobacco. And every single year in the United States, over 500,000 young men and women ages 12 to 17 will try chewing tobacco for the first time.
You know, last year, the smokeless tobacco industry spent almost a half a billion dollars marketing their products. But what that doesn't show you is the literally hundreds of millions of dollars of free advertising they get when baseball players on TV and in the ballpark use these products.
Tobacco that is smokeless is not harmless. Smokeless tobacco contains at least 28 carcinogens and causes a host of devastating diseases, including cancers of the head, neck, mouth, tongue, esophagus, pancreas, as well as heart disease, gum disease, and tooth decay. All of this is preventable, and we can do something about this.
If the cameras had followed me from the mound in 2007, Game 2 of the World Series, into the hospital with a feeding tube, chemotherapy, and radiation, I don't think a lot of kids would have taken up dipping. Or they might have stopped.
It's time to play ball and strike tobacco out of the ballpark.
Thank you, Mr. President. A very powerful presentation, as you can see. This item was heard today in the Health Committee chaired by Mr. Root. So I want to thank him for allowing us to move this item quickly. And I also want to thank Councilmember O'Farrell for his efforts and for waiving this out of the Parks Committee so we can affirm the vote today in full council. We amended the instructions from the original proposal this morning per the advice of the City Attorney to include that this will not only apply to baseball fields, but also to include all sports venues where organized sports are played. And while baseball is the main target, it certainly is not the only area that smokeless tobacco is used, and we want as robust a law as possible, and that amendment helps. So thank you, Mr. Root and Mr. O'Farrell for that, and also Councilmember Buzcaino for supporting that amendment. I also want to thank Councilmember Foretz for his support. And I want to thank Kevin Flatteri from the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids and the medical experts who testified this morning, including Dr. Jonathan Fielding, noted UCLA professor and former director of the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. We also had with us Dr. Michael Ong, Chair of Tobacco Education Research Oversight Committee for the California Department of Public Health. Their testimony was powerful. It talked about how smokeless tobacco is causing cancer and other health problems. But we recognize that it is not only an issue that affects the user, but it affects our young people and those who want to emulate their idols and the number of professional players that use smokeless tobacco. As you saw in the video, we had some testimony from one of the greats that, how his efforts to, or his experience with smokeless tobacco has caused him cancer and the agony and pain that that has caused for his life. Pitching great Curt Schilling, only 47, announced his treatment for oral cancer that he said was, without a doubt, unquestionably caused by 30 years of chewing tobacco. And he recently spoke in support of the Boston effort and talked about how people hailed him as tough for playing in the World Series with a bloody ankle. But he said that the pain he was going through, his cancer experience, was infinitely more painful than anything he ever went through on the mound. And like I said, while some may say that this is a personal choice and doesn't affect anyone but the user, according to a report issued last week by the Center for Disease Control, high school athletes use smokeless tobacco at nearly twice the rate of nonathletes. And when you look at high school boy athletes, their use of this horrible habit is three times as high as other high school students. And when we think of smokers and people using tobacco products, the last people you would think naturally is that athletes would want to use this because they, but what they see is their idols using this, and so they think intuitively that this will enhance their own performance. But we certainly know that is not true. So we want to change that. There are professional sports players who want to change that, coaches, and yes, even our own local team, the Dodgers, have put their support behind this effort. So I want to thank the Dodgers for their support in moving toward a smokeless tobacco stadium at Dodger Stadium. It's time to move on and promote a more positive image for a game that so many of us still love. Young kids want to be like their heroes, but when their heroes are doing something that harms themselves, we certainly want to educate them and not continue to allow them to do this. So I ask for your eye vote on this item. We have spoken with the City Attorney's Office, who will bring this item back to us within 30 days with a final ordinance so we can move forward and allow the City of Los Angeles to be part of what is becoming a national effort to knock tobacco out of the park. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've heard a lot of discussion of this issue for a while. It just occurred to me that I've never heard anyone address why baseball. And I know we've expanded it to other sports, but really, baseball is the target. And I think the reason for a lot of smokeless tobacco use in baseball is that there's a lot of standing around. You can wait an hour between at bats. You can play an entire game and get one ball hit to you in right field, and you've got a lot of adrenaline and you're nervously standing around waiting. And so you want to chew something. I've noticed, if you look in dugouts of Major League Baseball teams, if you look carefully, you'll see a bin of gum. And the reason is, I think, they realize they have to transition to something for the players to chew to get out of this bad habit and not to endanger their health. Baseball players have been endorsing chewing tobacco for decades and decades. I remember Nelly Fox, who was a player in my youth and a Hall of Famer. And here's an ad that I saw in a paper. It says, "Nelly Fox, star second baseman of the Chicago White Sox, says, 'Favorite is the chewing tobacco I use and I recommend to you.'" Now, obviously, that has had a pretty significant impact in the continuing use of tobacco, all that advertising. And of course, Nelly Fox died of cancer. There was another player, not as well-remembered, Bill Tuttle, who had a sterling career as an outfielder and third baseman. And he was quite successful as a player, but he ultimately wound up with oral cancer. And with the surgeries to keep him alive, he lost much of his face, including his jaw, teeth, and right cheek. And he became a spokesperson against chewing tobacco until his death at age 69. But it was quite a miserable period for him as well. I think we need to know that with the death of Tony Gwynn, probably the most visible in recent years, a great Hall of Fame-level player who died at 54, that it's time to stop this. And I think with this action today, we will take a giant step in the right direction. Hopefully, as Major League cities, one by one, take this action, the Players Union will recognize that they are not doing any good for their own players by continuing to advocate that chewing tobacco be allowed at Major League games and a terrible example for thousands and thousands of young people to keep taking up this bad habit. So I thank Mr. Weezer for bringing this forward. I think this will make a huge difference in public health once it's eliminated, and I believe the giant step of having Los Angeles do it will lead quickly to that result.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to also thank Mr. Weezer for your embrace of and leadership on Knock It Out of the Park. I think it's just a really great, a great new ordinance that we'll be approving here at City Hall. I just want to say a few words about how it's going to affect every single one of us and our districts because there are implications for regulating the prohibition of smokeless tobacco at all city park facilities as well. And it is my belief that we should encourage self-policing of all of the leagues that use our park facilities. And so I'll be working with City Attorney's Office and Recreation and Parks Department to encourage that to be written into the ordinance because we want to make sure that this is something that we can reach compliance on voluntarily. And I think that's the most likely way to push this in a cultural sense. And also that I'm going to challenge the Los Angeles Dodgers on the floor to help with the public service announcements of the dangers of smokeless tobacco for all home games, whether it's broadcast or on television, with all the visiting teams. And if Los Angeles can do it, Boston, San Francisco, other Major League cities can do it as well. And the Dodgers can play a huge role in making sure that our youth do not become addicted to nicotine and tobacco products. So again, I want to thank you, Mr. Weezer, for your leadership on this. Let's continue the momentum of protecting the youth of Los Angeles with measures like this, and I hope to see an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Corretts? Mr. Krikory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, when I was a kid, you could go to the store and buy a pack of candy cigarettes. You could buy chocolate cigars. You don't see those anymore. But in just about every drugstore and candy store in Los Angeles, near the counter someplace, near the cash register, you'll see bags of Big League Chew, gum that kids take out of a pouch, just like a smokeless tobacco pouch, and wad into their cheek and chew like gum. Now, why did we get rid of candy cigarettes? Why did we get rid of chocolate cigars? They're not popular now because people see the absurdity of encouraging kids to do something that will kill them. This is another big step, I think, in the right direction by discouraging these sorts of bad habits right from the beginning. Kids look up to baseball players, I mean, still. Baseball players are kids' idols. And when they see that big wad in their cheek, and when they see them, you know, dipping, and when they see them spitting, and they see them doing the things that they do, it makes that look like an attractive thing. It makes it look like something that their heroes do, so it's something that they should aspire to do as well. I think this is an important step forward, even if smokeless tobacco is on the decline, which I think it very much is. And even if it's not as popular in baseball as it once was, this step forward is a great opportunity for us to send the message to kids again. Don't start this. Don't start tobacco in any of its forms. And this will pay dividends for public health and for children's lives for many, many generations still to come. So, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts, thank you for bringing this matter. I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you. I'm getting disturbances, Mr. City Attorney, in the back. So I'm going to request that it stop. And I do want to say that it was another last warning to the back row. Mr. Weezer and O'Farrell and Corretts and Mr. Rue, thank you for pushing this forward. What a lot of people don't understand is that you hear about all of these drugs and nothing, nothing is more difficult than to give up smoking. It is the worst and most addictive habit probably on this planet. So one of the best things that we can do is to try to stop young people in the very beginning. Trust me, I speak from experience, but the more kids we stop in their tracks, the better. So I support this and cannot wait for it to return to this body as an ordinance. So with that said, why don't we, on this item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Good work. Mr. -- please, no more disturbances. Mr. Price, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, Mr. President, just moved reconsideration of item 1F.
Okay, on item 1F, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Price.
Two eyes.
Oh, sorry about that. Mr. Price.
Thank you, members. Would like to continue it for two weeks. Without objection.
Two weeks would be, what, September 22nd? Yes? Okay, so we'll continue it to September 22nd. Mr. Weezer.
We could reconsider item 1J, please, and also continue that item if not for two weeks at the appropriate time.
1J, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Two weeks would be September 22nd as well.
Thank you. And if we could also send item 16 forthwith, please?
Without objection.
Thank you.
Item 25, we have Mr. Spindler, Mr. Previn. Item 25, followed by Mr. Herman and Mr. Walsh. Item 25.
Yes. Just what we need, the Atwater Village East Bank Riverway Project. In a drought, it's always good to have riverways to remember where the water really goes. It goes to the farmers and it goes into the Atwater Village East Bank Riverway Project. Yes, named after the East Bank in Israel, by the way. The East Bank Riverway Project is one of the most important projects for the city because all of that water they're going to bring to Los Angeles through this aqueduct, the Atwater Village East Bank Riverway Aqueduct Project. Millions of gallons of fresh water brought to the people. And as he looks, one of the biggest sponsors and producers of this motion, Paul Crick-- Arien. I mean, you can't imagine how, when I saw this last night, $500,000 is hardly enough money for such a great thing. This could have cost millions of dollars. But they found a way to bring all of this water into Los Angeles through the Atwater Village East Bank Riverway Project. It's just amazing what this city can do when it puts its mind to it. And of course, all of the homeless and all of the displaced people in the front page of the LA Times will come down to Atwater Village and get that free water because you're going to give that water to the homeless to help them get themselves back on their feet. This isn't going to be just a project merely for white people to be in a white area. No, you're going to share it with the poor. Come down to the Atwater Village East Bank, pitch a tent and have free water. Thank you.
Mr. Previn.
Yes, it is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And I think that was a misstatement. This is not a Krikory. This is a motion by Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Blumenfield. And it is, in fact, a grant application, which always catches my interest because it's good to see that we are applying for money that may qualify. In this case, it is for the Atwater Village East Bank Riverway Project, or project if the typo is taken at face value. But it's a grant from the California Natural Resources Agency, and I'm assuming it's on the river near in Atwater. Now, we have a lot of activity, as Mr. O'Farrell will remind us frequently regarding the river. And I'm just wondering if there's a kind of a specific sense of what this $500,000 is for. We had heard about an Olympic Village to be by the river at some point. I don't think that's related to this one. We obviously have our Sportsman's Landing debacle in CD2, and we have a number of other river projects. So just trying to keep track of it and would like to know that this is intended to be a use that the constituents and residents of Atwater Village, who do have a great deal of controversy, I've learned recently, are on board with this and will be up to speed. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Well, where exactly, this is just a half a million for the grant application. What is this money going to be spent on by the state money? In fact, most of the money will be spent on setting up picnic tables at, on the LA River so people can watch the trickle of water going down, the trickle, which is much wider than a trickle of urine, except it's a different color, on the East Bank Riverway Project. And there's another half million for the West Bank Riverway Project that will be coming up pretty soon. But where are we going to get this money? Don't worry. This money will be spent, this money and the money saved when the state, when Switzerland cancels your bid for the Olympics.
Okay, last warning, Mr. Walsh, you're off the subject. Come on, Mr. Herman.
Sorry, Herman, I'll be on topic. First of all, we are discussing here this motion by Mr. O'Farrell and Blumenfield, who's not in his seat this morning, on the resolution for the East Bank Riverway Project for a half a million dollars. But it never states on the motion here whether it's federal or state money going in here. The same way the homeless people are being removed from the waterway--
Stay on the subject.
Yeah, there are people that live in the area there. They're my friends, just because they're homeless and live in the riverbank. And the issue here at Atwater Village, among other places in the city of Los Angeles where the water runs, there are many homeless people living along the riverbanks.
This deals with a grant application, Mr. Herman.
The question to ask, Herman, is, is there a grant by the federal or state? Are we causing a natural resource by this agency to disrupt the natural environment that long ago was already in place? Absolutely, yes. And so all the little animals that I know as well are going to be endangered species one day when my child or any of our children--
Stay on the subject.
--want to enjoy the East Bank Riverway Project in Atwater, where all the uppity-uppies live, like me. See? Look, uppity-uppity, Herb.
Stay on the subject. Stay on the subject. Anyway, you're off the subject. Thank you. Your time has expired. Sergeants, he's disrupting the meeting and needs to be. He's disrupting the meeting. In fact, I had already warned you, take him outside. Because I already warned you twice. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you. Sometimes the deranged ranting that we hear on the floor actually provides us an opportunity to explain things better for those that are watching television.
He's continuing to disrupt-- Hold your point. He's continuing to disrupt the meeting. He is continuing, City Attorney, and he's yelling and he's cursing and he's doing all of that. Okay, now, now you can listen from outside. Go ahead, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the vast majority of my constituents who actually want to see river improvements, what this proposed Atwater Village East Bank Way River, it converts approximately one mile of what is now an unattractive, weed-filled, terrible shape of an asphalt trail into a beautiful, clearly marked multi-use trail along the riverfront. There's a future connector to what they've already done in Glendale. The proposed design plans include lining the trail with California native plants, to have onsite stormwater best management practices, such as the use of a porous trail surface, bio swells for water conservation. The trail will be enhanced with artwork and a living habitat wall to interpret the natural, cultural history of the Los Angeles River. The project will also repurpose some of the material culled from demolition and irrigate habitat planting beds with recycled water. So this is a habitat restoration, beautiful improvement project that this money will be going toward. And I think that the constituents in my district and all river enthusiasts will value these improvements greatly. Thank you for letting me explain that.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Yes, Mr. Fuentes.
Can I ask for reconsideration on item 1H? And if it were to be approved, to move it for two weeks?
Let's vote on reconsideration for item 1H. Mr. Harris Dawson, same type of thing?
Yes, item 1D.
So why don't we do 1H, 1D? Reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Let's close the roll. Let's tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
And was that a two-week? So September 22nd, Madam Clerk, correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so now let's move on to item 27, where I have Mr. Previn, followed by Mr. Sax. Item 27, followed by Mr. Spindler, followed by Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes. Mr. Previn. Mr. Sax. Mr. Spindler. Mr. Sax.
Thank you for getting that card on time. Thank you. Somebody mentioned spending community block development grant funds for your green space. These final track maps generate Quimby fees. Now, is there a definition that's different about a green space in a park because Quimby fees would be used for a park? So why would you spend like the $600,000 for community development block grant funds for a green space when between these two locations, or only one of them has a Quimby fee listed, you have $720,000? Green space is not a park? Is that like the right of way, not being a walkway type thing and it's all legalese? And again, I ask about nonprofit buildings generating green space. Again, about the William Parker Center being renovated into housing. You have another item in here for senior income, low-income senior housing. What about median income housing for general public? Renovate the building. Do something with it, make it useful. Mayor wants to buy property by the river--
Arnold, come back directly on the subject a little bit more.
He wants to buy property to create an Olympic Village.
No, no, come on the subject, Arnold. Okay, he's not, his time's over. Thank you. So if we could get Mr. Spindler or Mr. Previn, I mean, we'll get Mr. Spindler, followed by Mr. Previn.
Number 27, final maps. ACD4, Wilshire Boulevard in the poor ghetto section of 5500 to 5528, Wilshire Boulevard. Mr. Herman votes no. Quimby fee, $72825 of corruption. Congratulations to the mafia.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Spindler.
I'm talking to the baby, I know. CD14, I don't want to interrupt the baby.
No, you're not on the subject. Okay, thank you. Your time's expired. Come on, Mr. Previn. You're not on, you're not on the topic. You're not on the topic. You're not on the topic. Come on, Mr. Previn. He's disrupting the meeting. Mr. Previn.
Yeah, it is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And I was trying to identify, this is Hanjin International Corp., sir, the applicant in this matter, which is agenda number 15-1024. Hanjin International Corp. are our friends and the folks behind Korean Airlines and the Wilshire Grand, a number of big properties. This one, if I'm not mistaken, is for a 500 hotel room facility. And we have heard this Hallowood Council talk about the importance of bringing hotels into this arena so that we can provide, you know, sort of the kind of businesses that work in concert with the, not the concert hall, but the convention center. Now, this is on Wilshire in Figaroa, 930 West Wilshire, Figaroa. And as always, these deals have, you know, a requirement that they have to provide a certain amount of affordable units. I was not able to identify. I think it may be that there are 100 that are being provided in this case. In any case, it's going to provide 275,000 square feet of commercial retail, restaurant service and such. So, you know, it raises the question, is this the kind of thing that we should be facilitating? Obviously, the friends at Somus, the big lobbyists, are pushing hard for this, so we expect you all to get into step and approve it. And obviously, if this is, and I can't quite tell by the address, if this is the big, beautiful hotel with the sky lounge for the city council, the hotel, the Korean Air, actual branded hotel, I'm very excited about that, sir. But I don't know because frankly, I did not do my research and I apologize for that. But look, let's just stay focused on what's important here. There are no challenges that we cannot meet, and thank you for taking an interest.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, that brings us to item number 18. Mr. Walsh, Ms. Peirman. Mr. Hunt. Mr. Spindler. Come forward if you intend on speaking on this item.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Jay Walsh Confidential. This is a REAP, Rent Escrow Count Program. And these are addresses on North Willow Crest Avenue. What these are is removal of these properties from the REAP means that they have corrected all the violation, the code violations, and now the city will allow-- And now the city will allow the renters to pay the rent directly to the property owner, to the landlord, rather than going through the city, waiting for the landlord to hurry up and repair these code violations. Let this be a lesson to everybody. Check your apartment for code violations and report them. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you, Mr., I mean, Ms. Peirman. Come forward, followed by Mr. Hunt or Mr. Spindler. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, here's, we have lots of code violations. It's too bad we don't know exactly what codes they're going against and whether these apartment owners know about them, these violations. The biggest problem we've got is you're just gonna get them super annoyed putting these violations on them. Probably mostly, I've seen a lot of violations for a lot of silly things, like exactly how far away the heater is from something. Because I know when I seen HUD, they've come in and they've done the same thing. Lot of silly violations that means nothing. So I'm against this type of thing because I think they're just wanna stick it to the landlord and they'll just stick it right back to the renters. And I'm not gonna take any more than one minute because I'm, three, two, one, zero.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Mr. Spindler?
Yes, again, congratulations to the homeowners and property owners, especially the one on A, CD2. Freedom at last. Freedom. These rent or escrow people are free. Free slaves, free finally. They get to collect their rent like normal humans in their mailbox and put the money in their checking accounts. But that's not what happens when you're in REAP. When you're in REAP, the homeowner gets raped. Because what happens is that you gotta keep putting the money in the city and the building inspector keep coming out. Like in CD8, CD9, they keep coming out and they go, "You are still in violation." Now, these people are no longer in violation because they found a way to pay off the building inspector. Woo-dee-hoo! And that's what we need to do. We need to go and pay off the building inspectors so you can get off the REAP list and into the freedom of life. And you can go now, all those properties are free, like the dream of MLK, the dream. But before, they were slaves.
Stay on the subject. Stay on the subject, Mr.
The landlord, and he don't wanna hear it because the landlord gotta give the money to the city and the city then gotta go out with building inspectors. And they gotta keep getting paid off, but now no more. Congratulations to all these homeowners now, all these apartment building owners now that are gonna get their rent checks in the mailbox money and they're gonna be free and they're gonna be free to fix their own buildings and hire their own people and no longer are they gonna have to pay off the building inspectors. I am so happy today. Thank you, building owners. Thank you for paying off the building inspectors. Woo-dee-hoo, freedom, woo-dee-hoo.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you. Mr. Herb Wesson, the cards were ideal to make the Red Chief Hunt, that's on the card. Please announce it the correct way, sir. That's what the cards were made for.
You need to stay on the subject.
I am, sir. The Red Chief Hunt is on the subject. That was my card.
No, it's not. This talk on item 18 or whatever, but that's not on the subject, Michael, you know that.
Okay, but please, please, please do that for me, sir.
No, you stay on the subject.
Okay, I'd like to thank the city for forgiving the homeowners and not making them pay the escrow and things like that. It's about time the city do more for our homeowners and things like that. And it's about time that the city recognize that in forgiving these homeowners of their debt, that we create more infrastructure for these people to rebuild and remodel their homes, which makes a better livelihood for their tenants and themselves too. The Red Chief Hunt has now spoken, sir. Please don't violate my civil rights again.
Thank you. All right, let us prepare to vote on this issue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's move to item 26. Mr. Walsh. Mr. Hunt. Mr. Sacks. Mr. Wayne.
Logging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is item 26. Keep the Hollywood Recreation Center swimming pool open on weekends through September 27th. It's only 2015, it's only a few more weeks. We are, of course, in favor of this and we're in favor of saving water by using all the broken pipe water in the swimming pool. And we believe that the swimming pool should not just be open on weekends, the swimming pool should be open 24 hours a day. Because we need to pour out some of that water that's being, pipes are busted all over Hollywood. So we want the swimming pool open 24 hours a day, or more, maybe 25 hours a day. But the Hollywood Recreation Center is important. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler, you're out of time. So now I'm looking for, you're out of time, Mr. Spindler, so I'm looking for Mr. Hunt or Mr. Sacks. He's out of time.
Thank you again. The name on the card is the Red Chief Hunt, but since you don't respect that, tomorrow...
You're not on the subject.
...the Red Chief Hunt. Deion O'Connor, can you say?
No, you're not on the subject. You're not on the subject.
I'd like to invoke what I think is a privilege to kids and what I think that should be open to the public, probably five days a week, because it creates community-based policing. And let me tell you why. Anytime you keep kids out of trouble in the pool, then you're doing your job. And swimming is keeping kids out of trouble. I think that that facility should be open at least five days a week. I think you guys should do the funding. And you are now listening to the Red Chief Hunt.
Thank you. Thank you. You're off the subject and disrupting the meeting as well. Mr. Sacks, please come forward.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. And a couple of things. This comes down to $3,000 a day to keep the pool open for the AB 1290 funds, and one of my favorite types of funding, the AB 1290 funds, was the money that was generated by the state legislature through the redevelopment fiasco. And redevelopment was discontinued, but you're still getting that AB 1290 funds. We still, to this day, do not know how much goes into each council district office for AB 1290 funds, in addition to the other funds, the pipeline funds and the bus bench revenue funds and these other assorted funds that the council district office gets. But $3,000 a day to keep a pool open? I need a lifeguard, I'm drowning.
Mr. O'Farrell?
It was only four and a half short weeks ago that we reopened the completely rebuilt Hollywood pool at 1122 Cole Avenue in Hollywood, in a neighborhood that really needs and deserves a world-class facility, and now it has it. So I want to thank the men and women at Bureau of Engineering under Gary Lee Moore, the men and women at Recreation and Parks under Mike Scholl for making this happen. Now, we're still in a heat wave. The summer is going to stay with us for several more weeks, so we are gonna keep the pool open on weekends, every Saturday and Sunday from 11 to 5. So no matter where you are in the city of LA, this coming weekend, it's gonna be hot again. You can now enjoy this wonderful facility and I encourage everyone to come. It's 350 a day for adults and less expensive for children, fully staffed, lifeguards on duty. And I'm happy to announce that Recreation and Parks is working with my office and we believe we'll be able to keep the pool open on weekends into October. So it's been a hot year, climate change is upon us, and we want to explore other ways long-term across the city to keep our pools open beyond Labor Day weekend because they are so heavily used. And I encourage, again, everyone to come and enjoy the lovely new pool at Hollywood for the next several weekends in a row. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, let us move on to item 24. Mr. Walsh. Ms. Peirman. Go right ahead.
Yeah, Daniel Gus. What is Speedway Policy Associates? How about that, council members? Speedway Policy Associates is Jim Bickhart, who was suspended for a week without pay when he worked for Mayor Vierigosa. Do you know what he did? He encouraged people from a city computer on the Yo Venice blog to take homeless people from Mike Bonin's district and quote, "If these folks won't leave, we should get someone to come around with a semi, load the homeless scum into it like stinking sardines, and drive them out to the Mojave, dump them there in the dead of night, blindfolded, and drive away." Period. End of story. And this fucker was suspended from his job from the mayor's office. This isn't in his personnel file anymore, but I have a copy and you have a copy. He was supposed to apologize as a requirement to keep his job. Ask Mr. Bickhart, before you give him our tax dollars, where that posted apology is. It's only written under Mr. Bickhart's pseudonym, Snake Plissken. Here it is. He swore he would apologize. He signed it, Jaime de la Vega, December 1st, 2010. And you're gonna give this piece of shit $32,000 for a public services, a personal services thing? Let me show you what else this guy does. He sleeps in the fucking meetings. He sleeps. Once you find out why Ruth Galanter fired Jim Bickhart, this guy's been sucking off the public tit for 25 or 30 years now, find out why you're gonna give a job to somebody who used a city asset to threaten homeless people. You say you're doing stuff for homeless, but you're giving this man a personal services contract? Shame on you. Ask Bickhart to explain where his apology is before you give him our tax dollars. Jim Bickhart, throw him the hell out of here.
Okay, next.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. The contract on item 24 doesn't mention Jim Bickhart, but he is Speedway Policy Associates. As far as the confidential personal matter memorandum, did it disappear? No, it's right in my hands and you have a copy of it. Let me quote from this. Bickhart was deputy mayor at this time. You admit, Mr. Bickhart, that under his pseudonym you posted inflammatory statements, I believe some of them were homophobic, about the issue on an internet forum or blog viewable by the general public. On behalf of the office of mayor, you admit you perform policy analysis, proposed parking restrictions. He got in big trouble. He was suspended. And now he's getting a contract. Mr. Bickhart, I just want to tell you, only in LA, and this is another reason to vote for Switzerland to vote no on the Olympics.
Come on.
Yeah, I didn't know much what Speedway was, but I could see what it is now. I don't see how you can want to get somebody who's been suspended to be able to get $32,000. It shows that the city council doesn't care about what the character of the person they're giving money to. There's probably, he's just waiting for a handout from them. So I'm not sure exactly why you're doing it, but it says, "They approved a personal services contract with Speedway Policy Associates to provide services for the fifth council districts from August 16, 2015, in amount not to say $32,000 from the funds." So I say, if this man is not good and it's what all they said, then I don't think that we should be allowing this Speedway project. Let's say no, but I know you'll just automatically vote yes. Fourteen ayes. Close the roll, tabulate the vote, fourteen ayes. Bye.
Mr. Previn, you can come on down, or Mr. Hunt, Mr. Sacks? Who? No, I'm so sorry. I've been informed you're out of time and I apologize for that. They, I apologize. So if I could get Mr. Sacks and Mr. Hunt. No, they, Sergeants, I've been informed that he's out of time. Now you're just obstructing the meeting. So come on, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. And $32,000 from funds available in the council office budget. All these office budgets get to $32,000 available. Would this be the funding that Mr. Sadeo used when he first got in office? He came up with a million dollars that somehow, who's that knucklehead who replaced? I can't remember his name, to clean up the district. And Mr. Weesar used this $32,000 to pay his staff? We don't know. But again, more accountability here is required. And this is $6,000 a month? You just approved the contract, keep the pools open, at $3,000 a day? There's something wrong with the math that you people just go ahead and float through and don't think anybody's really paying attention. Just money off the top, we don't care. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next.
The Red Chief Hunt. Mr. Hunt says, really fuck this guy. We're gonna give him another $32,000 after he's sleeping on the job and really causing Venice to be a disgrace? All of these things that these people are saying count for something. Now, if he went to sleep on the job, Venice really doesn't like him and we giving him our money? I pay taxes in Venice. I got a sales permit, says the Garden of Eve, oceanfront walk. I pay sales taxes. I am really, I am really amazed that this guy is getting my tax dollars. And if he's violating people's rights, he's got suspended from his job, and he doesn't understand the Venice community, and we're still giving him $32,000? For what? Fuck the guy and the horse he rode in here on. You guys ought to stop the nonsense. That's what red means. Red means stop the bullshit. And you guys, as city council members, it's within you guys' hands right here is to stop the bullshit. Let's not pay this guy $32,000. Let's take the check out and give it to the homeless so he can't hurt nobody else. And that's what we should do as American citizens. This is the United States of America and this is the Red Chief Hunt speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's, let us vote on this subject, let us, this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, now, Mr. Fuentes.
I'd ask that we reconsider item 1B and also extend that till September 22nd, please.
Okay, we're gonna vote on reconsideration, item 1B. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that's been continued to September 22nd. Ms. Ramirez, please come forward. 28. Mr. Sacks? Yes, Mr. Krikorian? Yes, Mr. Kukorian?
I'd like to ask for reconsideration, please, on item 1E, for the purpose of continuing it for two weeks.
Okay, let's move on that first. Let's, 1E?
1E, please.
One reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that will be held until September 22nd. Okay, Ms. Ramirez, item 28.
Good afternoon. This is in reference to the consideration of the housing assets. Again, ladies and gentlemen, before we release any assets to the developers, we are asking that these properties be housed for first and foremost, military veterans, legal law-abiding citizens, senior citizens, and baby boomers. Our developers that we are funding are making so much money off of us, the taxpayers, and they're going, and they're making all these wonderful homes, but yet again, they're subsidizing, we are subsidizing these wetbacks and gangbangers. Let us stop funding these developers who are in turn are renting or giving, selling it to all these wetbacks and gangbangers who pony up the money out of drug money. Most, if not all, of these gangbangers and wetbacks moonlight in the evening by doing drugs and selling drugs and working with the cartels. Let's stop funding the drugs with these cartels, please. So again, the developers make so much money, and we need to put an end to this. We need to make sure where and whom they are renting to. This is America. This is America. Let us not obliterate the middle class. Let us rent to our middle-class, law-abiding, American citizens, first and foremost, our military. I know Buscaino's laughing over there, but again, let us, let us rent first and foremost to our military. Get them out of the homeless population and get them housed. And then, secondly, our baby boomers and senior citizens, because one day you might be homeless. Don't laugh. You don't know where life takes you. You do not know where life takes you. So I say, please, let us take those steps and get rid of those developers who are trying to cut corners left and right and weasel and make Minnie Mouse, Mickey Mouse trips. Let us, again, house our military.
Thank you. Thank you very, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. She's now disrupting the meeting. Okay, Mr. Sacks? Mr. Sacks has how much time? Would somebody tell me? One minute.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, good morning, Arnold Sacks. It's interesting that you're going to release the covenants with the Community Redevelopment Agency, and I'm wondering about that, you know, these covenants that you have with the redevelopment agency. It's too bad, there was just a story in the downtown news about Metro going to do some work on a Pico station to renovate it, to make it, I don't know, more friendly user. And I believe that that was part of the AEG deal when they had the stadium, and there were covenants with the redevelopment, redevelopment covenants there, that AEG got redevelopment property to develop as long as they were going to build the stadium, but those covenants were never.
You're not on the subject. Speak, speak exactly to the item.
The agency covenants, right here in your item, sir. Read the item. I'm just asking, what's the, what's the status? How do you decide which covenants you overturn and which ones you don't?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Your time has expired. Mr. Kukorian is, did you press, or is that a?
No, that's old. Thank you.
Okay, I got that. Okay, let us prepare.
And, Mr. President, just for the record, amended motion 28A has been circulated.
Okay, let us vote, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Madam Clerk, this brings us where?
That brings counsel to general public comment.
Okay, then we will go to general public comment. Ruth, I saw her earlier, Ruth Sarnoff, Mr. Gus, and Ms. Ramirez.
Ruth Sarnoff, this is a connect the dots for you. Some statistics. The amount a full-time worker must earn in Los Angeles per hour for an average two-bedroom is $27,000, pardon me, is $27.38, three times the city's $9 minimum wage. The number of manufacturing jobs in the U.S. on January 1, 2000, was 17.3 million. At the end of 2014, it was 12.1 million. The percentage change in annual workers' pay from 1978 to 2013 was 10.2%. The percentage change, I think I'm supposed to have two minutes.
Thank you. No, ma'am, one minute, general public comment. Mr. Gus, one, no, 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 one, one minute. No, it's one minute. She's disrupting the meeting. Come on, Ms. Sarnoff. Your time has expired. Your time has expired. Mr. Gus? Mr., Mr., your time is, your, your time has expired. Your time has expired. Mr. Gus, followed by Ms. Ramirez.
Okay, so Ron Galperin's audit of LA Animal Services, I think Mr. Galperin jumped the shark, and I'll have an article about that out soon. It's a shame he didn't audit any of the stuff that this city council knew about. In Mr. Harris Dawson's district, puppies for sale at a used appliance store. It took the city 505 days to go out and investigate. In Mr. Sadio's district, a chained dog being eaten alive by flies. See how long it took the city to get out there? That's Mr. Sadio's district. In Mr. Ryu's district, if you can see that, it's one of the most grotesque things you've ever seen in your life. Find out it's actually a deer with its guts falling out, and see if the city had a gun to put him out of his misery. The city didn't. In Mr. Bonin's district, pit bull breeder shows. You talk about stopping pit bulls and chihuahuas from being born. In Mr. Bonin's district, pit bull breeding shows. Galperin jumped the shark.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez, followed by Mr. Previn and Mr. Hunt. Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a wetback and a chungo gangbanger epidemic. No to the Olympics. It would be unsafe, and it would be deceitful to our tourists to come to Los Angeles. It is unsafe. We do have a vicious, violent, nasty gang epidemic. And for that reason, we are voting for the great jefe, Donald Trump and his family. God bless Donald Trump. And you want to know why I'm voting for Donald Trump? Because first of all, he loves America. He is an American. His children are American. He's got that fire and spit. He wants to restore America. We have too many wetbacks and gangbangers who have destroyed America, and I do not believe in their agenda. They want to destroy America. I'm sorry, as a Mexican-American, I do not want to destroy America. I want to rebuild, edify, and build up this beautiful country that's been good to me and my family. God bless America, and God bless Donald Trump and his family. May we all pray for.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I could get Mr. Previn, Mr. Hunt, Ms., Ms. Pierman.
Yes, Council President Wesson, it's Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And sir, I know you are trying, but Ruth Sarnoff has been coming to meetings for much of her adult life, and she spoke for one minute, and what it raises is another problem with your meeting, sir. One minute in general public comment is restrictive. It's almost impossible to introduce something that's just under your jurisdiction in 60 seconds and then make a comment on it. I would urge you to look at your rules, which say two minutes, but of course, you have recently, because you don't like ad hoc criticism, you've reduced it to one minute. You could change that, sir, because you're the big guy. And I would ask, you know, she was in tears today. You could ask Duarte or Morris, those are the sergeants who you employ here. They had to take her out. She could not even say a word. She was so sad because you were restricting her from giving you com, she cares. She wants to talk about, you know, Caltrans and how they have space to put homeless people. This has got to change, sir. You can do it today, tomorrow, or the next day, but you got to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, Mr. Hunt, Pierman, and Mr. Walsh.
The Red Chief Hunt is on the card. This is part of the Brown Act. I'm really amazed by an African-American president that cannot read the card. That's humiliating to my race. As an African-American, our president cannot read the card and follow the Brown Act. That's basically breaking the law of the public meeting. It's a sad day. I created a reading class called Reading Force Plus One, which you gave me a certificate in the Los Angeles County Sheriff Department. Please practice your reading skills, Mr. Herb. Another thing, the Red Chief says, "Stop the bullshit in L.A." Stop the bullshit. Follow the law. You guys are supposed to be abiding law citizens, not to break the law. Herb Wesson, it's a fucking shame, man, when you can't read the card and follow the Brown Act, brother. You look like me. Stop the bullshit. Do, do it right.
Ms. Pierman, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Sacks, Mr. Abrahams.
Listen up, folks. We are doomed. We're all die if the government led by Obama lifts the sanctions on Iran. You must tell your congressman to vote no, or you will die if they get nuclear power. The sanctions worked, folks. Kept them powerless to destroy the West. Iran called Persia, destroyed the first temple. They're the biggest, most dangerous enemy we have. Society is over 5,000 years old, and we can't change them. And one time, every Muslim country was under Iran. Get ready for World War III. Obama's bringing us back to the seventh-century Islam. You can, you can lift the sanctions if Iran decides to demeritillize. Obama's Iran deal is making this, they're making them strong in the military, is not helping the people. We need to bring over Obama and have him tried at the Hague for war crimes that he's going to cause with this Iran deal. We're all going to die.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Sacks, followed by Mr. Drew, Mr. Abrahams.
At Hollywood, tweeting at Hollywood Dems, anybody but Englander for supervisor? No Olympics 2024 in L.A.? And most importantly, Austin Butner for mayor? You say, well, he's this, he's a publisher of the L.A. Times? No, he was just fired about a half an hour ago. Why was he fired? Because of pressure brought by Herb Wesson and pressure brought by Garcetti on the Tribune Corporation to get rid of him for the report card. There will be no more report cards. Give the mayor of this city a C, and you get fired. But Mr. Butner has enough money to run. He's going to be running for, for mayor. He's got his campaign fully financed, and we want Austin Butner in now. You live in a city where the mayor has enough to keep out Glenn Dake, his lover's name from the L.A. Times, his gay lover's name, and now he proved it by getting rid of Austin Butner. He kicked the ass of the mayor, of the, of the publisher of the L.A. Times, and they're bringing in Baltimore.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sacks, followed by Mr. Abrahams, followed by Mr. Spindler.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks, and I appreciate the city council doing all that heavy lifting about chewing tobacco. Maybe they could do something about lead poisoning. This is a story in September 5th. City officials, wait, city officials seek to quell rise in homicide. You know, I hear that that lead poisoning could be dangerous to city youth. You ought to really check into doing something about that. If you can lift so heavy to get rid of spitting tobacco, do something about lead, lead poisoning. And then another high-grade topic, this one from the Daily Breeze from Wednesday, September 2nd. L.A. is golden choice for U.S. for the Olympics homeless summit. What a, what a paradox of highlighted headlines brought to you by your city council. Homeless summit, $4.6.1 billion for the Olympics.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Abrahams, followed by Mr. Spindler.
Last Friday, LADBS removed the PCIS database from public access at the self-service computers over at 201 North Fig. This interface is used by the public and industry professionals alike. The LADBS cited security concerns, but that explanation is bogus because the public login is read-only and there is no threat. PCIS is a public record under the Sierra Club versus Orange County case, and the loss of public access is contrary to the accountability, accessibility, transparency mandate under the 6250 Public Records Act. PCIS, this information not available on any of the other ZMS and ITIS databases such as LADS permits not yet approved, clearance summary sheets, case file notes, information alerts applicable to other areas, and about a dozen other forms and notices. And so I ask that the city council look into ensuring that this database is restored to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Yes, the monster ghetto master has won again. Herb Wesson, you got my buddy Butner fired. Butner be fired from the L.A. Times. Austin Butner was a man who spoke the truth. Austin Butner was a man who dared to publish local stories in the front page of the L.A. Times. But like Martin Luther King, he got shot down by Herb Wesson, the slave owner, and he no more. Now we got to be emancipated. Austin Butner for mayor. Come, Austin, run for mayor and do what you did for the brief two months you were at the Times. Emancipate us slaves because we're all here in the city in the 15 plantations. I'm called Plantation Five. Emancipate the slaves. Thank you. Thank you. Your time's expired. That concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, what's currently before this body?
Counsel has motions for post and referral.
They are posted and referred. Announcements, members? Any announcements? If we could all rise for adjourning motions? All rise. I'm going to look to my left, Mr. Harris Dawson's side, and I want to recognize Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an extension of our city family, and it's with great sadness that I announced the, the Official Police Garage Association also is announcing the passing of their beloved OPG colleague, Mark Henninger, who we all have known and worked with for, for many years of Quicksilver Towing. Prior to buying Quicksilver Towing in 1997, Mark founded Keystone Towing, the OPG for the Van Nuys division of LAPD in 1990. In 1998, Mark, along with six other owners of the tow and transport companies, founded United Road Service and opened it up to the public through an IPO. He went on to serve on the Board of Directors of United Road Service in 2002. Mark decided he needed to dedicate his efforts completely to the community and to Quicksilver Towing, serving as the OPG for the West Los Angeles area. Mark will be terribly missed by all of his peers, and celebration of his life is going to be coming up on this Friday at 2 o'clock at the West Minister Presbyterian Church in Westlake Village. On a personal note, I've known Mark for many, many years, and you talk about somebody that just dedicates his life to community and family and his staff, his employees. He just continued to give back every single day and put so much into the communities he served, as oftentimes, not just with many of these OPG garages, they're an extension of LAPD. And as Joe and others will tell you, working right as a senior lead, though, you rely on them, and you're working with people in oftentimes the most tragic conditions and after horrific accidents and deaths, and you're relying on them to come and help. And Mark would often show up on his own just to help and lend support to the families, be there to help the incidents. He's a very good man, and our thoughts and prayers are with him. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. I'm going to continue to look to my left. I don't see any other. I'm going to go to the right side. Any adjourning motions on the right side? I don't see any members. See you tomorrow. This meeting is adjourned.